Good evening and thank you for joining us tonight. For our community members at home, if you're wishing to reach out to the Board of Education, you can reach us at clerk@bolton.cny ric.org. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would somebody move Action 1.02 to approve the agenda?
Move it.
Second.
All those in favor? I. Opposed? Staining? Passes 6:00. In the event of an emergency and we need to evacuate the building, we can go out the door behind Mr. Hendrickson or we can go out the superintendent's door here to my right. Move as far away from the building as possible. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the mission with liberty and justice for all. There is nobody signed up for public forum this evening, so can I get somebody to move Action 1.06 to approve the May 27th regular meeting minutes?
Move it.
Second.
All those in favor? I. Opposed? Staining?
One. Aye.
Oh, two.
Passes 4:02. Tonight for the President's Report. June 12th, we have a couple of things going on. Our graduation walk through for our seniors, they will be going through their old schools, the elementaries and the junior high. That'll be very exciting. So if anyone is out and about and wants to see that, that would be great.
It gets going around 10:00.
10 o'clock, I was gonna ask you what time.
They're planning to be in the junior high between 11:00 and 11:15.
I have a question. What do students do that say they were from Swigau?
What my understanding is, they've joined one of the schools.
Okay.
They just kind of join in maybe a friend or... That's what I asked that same question to one of the students last year. I said, "How did..." And they said, "Oh, I just picked with one of my friends."
Perfect. Also on June 12th, we will be having our cupcakes and conversation with our new superintendent who will be joining us on July 1st. So June 12th at G-Ray Bodley High School from 5:00 to 7:00. Community is welcome. Staff, students, those in the community. Come on out and meet Mr. Lawrence and have cupcakes and conversation with him. That'll be at the library at G-Ray Bodley. Jazz jamboree you have on here, so that's gonna be a big one, huh, Mr. Pelvino?
It should be a lot of fun. That's your junior high and your high school jazz bands coming together. That's gonna be great fun.
Will that be livestreamed for members of the community who can...
And the person who livestreamed just nodded his head, so the answer is yes.
Fantastic, that's great. June 20th is, can't believe it's here already, but our seniors will be graduating. So the graduation down at the athletic complex at 6:30.
Please make sure Des knows.
I was just gonna say, if you have not already RSVP'd and you would like to be there, let Desiree know. Regular board meeting on the 24th, last day of school on the 27th. You've already shared the half-day schedule with us for younger students. Regions are underway, they started today. So that is something that always brings the end of the year. For our annual reorganization meeting, we will be doing that on July 8th, but we need to kind of discuss how we want to do that. Last year, it looked like we did the reorg meeting at 5:00 and then we followed with the business meeting right after. So I want to ask my colleagues, would 5:00 work for you for July 8th for the reorg meeting? Everybody good?
I'm good whenever.
Good? All right, so we will do that at 5:00 and then we will just follow right in with the business meeting following the reorg meeting.
And what day of the week is that?
It's Tuesday, Tuesday, July 8th. It's our normal meeting that we would have that for the second Tuesday of the month.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And then I just want to clarify for my colleagues. July 22nd is our second meeting of the month and that is the day that we're going to be doing a board retreat prior to our meeting. Mr. Lawrence has already said that that's an idea he wants to do. It'll be good with our new board member coming in. It will be between, I just heard from our lawyer this morning, because it will be going with our law firm, a couple of our lawyers coming down and Susan Johns will be meeting with us virtually. It'll be from 4:00 to 6:00 and then we can just go into our board meeting, which will be just if there's any business that we need to do, a short, quick board meeting that we normally do that second or fourth Tuesday of the month. Are there any questions?
Will that be in this room?
Yes. Yep, right in here and then we can move right in. So we will just be touch and base. It'll be a nice team bond board experience for our new superintendent, new board member and then all of us veterans who are on there.
Does that include the superintendent's team or is it just...
Yes, let me extend the olive branch to our superintendent's team. You guys are definitely part of that. So I was gonna have to get that out to you guys. But yep, anything you guys want to bring to us, we'll work together as a team and start our new year off with a bang. Any questions or anything that anybody needs to add for... All right, then with that, we're gonna go ahead and move it to superintendent's report.
Thank you. Welcome to June. I believe we're at our June meetings already and as you said, it's been a special time of year. If you haven't had the opportunity, please take a look at the concerts, all the live streams that we've done. I don't know if you've had the opportunity, but the feedback this year has been extremely, it's always positive, but this year the elementaries combined, their choruses, their bands and their orchestras, and it was a really powerful evenings. And Fairgrave, actually Fairgrave and it's Granby is combined this, might be tomorrow night, Wednesday, I have to look at my schedule. But it's this week, just great things. But last week, we had concerts, the high school completed their concerts. We had a Volney-Lanigan, which was just a wow the other night. But every concert's been a wow, they've combined them. And I think the most special moment was when our two retired music teachers were in sync conducting their concert at the same time. It was amazing to watch the chorus, the band and the orchestra together at one time. It's a lot of kids. So amazing things. We've got graduation, obviously the 20, moving up ceremonies going on in elementary schools. There's a lot of things. Please check your weekly updates. All of those dates and times are in there. You're more than welcome to attend any of those events going on and I hope you take that opportunity. So it's been a really great year and kids are really celebrating a lot of accomplishments. So, thank you. So the first item this evening is our capital project update. Mr. James and Mr. Herbert and Mr. Laird. I don't know if Laird's going up or not tonight, but Mr. update. All right. You have the floor.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Matthew Herbert. I'm the project manager for LaChase and I'm overseeing the various phases of this capital project.
And Mike James from King &amp; Chain, I'm project manager.
So we're just gonna give a brief overview of all the different phases for the capital project. So this is all four of the phases in the buildings that they will be touching next slide. So Phase 1 actually started last year. The gym equipment and the, including the bleachers, were replaced and this summer, we're working with PAC and Rombo Electric and Western New York Floors to finish the rest of it. The painting and the sound system updates and the new finish on the floor. Work has already started. You know, we're starting to work through painting and prepping for everything else. So far, everything's going well. Next slide. Phase 2, we just took bids and the board just approved. Our GC is PAC, electrical contractor is Patricia, mechanical contractor is CNS Companies, our plumber is J&amp;A Mechanical and our site contractor is JMR Excavating. This project has extensive site work at the high school, at Granby. We're renovating bathrooms in both the high school and Fairgrave. We're doing abatement in Fairgrave. So we're excited to get this work kicked off as well.
Then we'll start this summer and move into next summer?
Yes, this is a two-summer project.
Correct.
Just a reminder, in Phase 1, we're also, we have worked at Fairgrave as well. We previously repaired the windows, so all of the double hung windows operate much more smoothly. And as soon as those staff and students get out, we'll be replacing the concrete steps and some of the sidewalks from that building.
Yeah.
So that's also Phase 1.
Yeah, thanks. And on to Phase 3. We're gonna be working at the softball and baseball fields at G-Ray Bodley, be working in the athletic complex and the junior high. We're gonna be doing drainage in the softball, baseball fields, re-roofing and adding to the bathroom or, and not adding to, renovating the bathroom in the athletic complex. Doing some elevator upgrades at the junior high and just, you know, doing some HVAC upgrades and main entrance updates.
No, just gonna add, at the junior high, we're also modifying the entry to make that more secure. We're gonna do some subtle changes at the main office. It's primarily about adding a secure window within your existing investment view.
And then on to Phase 4. Volney and Lanigan, we're doing a lot of site work, you know, replacing the playgrounds, HVAC upgrades in a few of the areas. The cafeteria floor is being abated and replaced. So these are just some items that have been looked after for a few years that everyone is looking to have replaced or updated. So these are all four of the phases. Any questions or comments for us?
Mike, I think it was people I asked kind of we talked to. Do we learn any more about the window and insulation we're looking into at the junior high?
Yeah, that's a good question. We did talk about that previously. As part of Phase 3, we're including some value to have the general contractor group, one-depth investigation force. Remember that we just had two openings in the exterior wall, so it's our plan to, wherever that GC is, involve them in looking at some more locations. We'll have more detail.
We're trying to figure out what would be a good strategic location, a strategic amount, so that we're not looking at more than we need to, but that we're getting a comprehensive look at what is going on.
Thank you. Questions? If you haven't gone around, and I know the work started at the high school. I was out in front of the school, like the junior high, and I watched the tractor-trailer truck pull in during arrival in the morning, bringing all their scaffolding in for the painting. And I know they've been doing a lot of work. I saw the gray paint on the pictures here. So moving forward, remember the floor will be done in there. That room will be then pretty much from top to bottom, literally will be completely renovated. And that's a place where a thousand kids on some days go in there. So if you will, running kids through the week, that's always a space that's used. So that's good news.
Yeah, we've been able to start. I know Dave has worked really hard alongside Corey and his team to make sure that we cause as little problems as possible.
So it's room. So are there any questions or things like that?
When is the final phase expected to be completed? I know a lot of stuff was started in 2025. When is...
So Phase 4 would be expected to be completed in 2026.
And then hopefully, I was mentioning in another meeting, hopefully we'll know our debt limit. We've been requesting, hopefully with that new 10% debt limit, the next project hopefully will be in '27, hopefully.
Pull down in '27.
And hopefully that'll be a much bigger project where you can actually do some depth and breadth of work as opposed to some of the stuff that's just, we have to do. It'll be hopefully the stuff we have to do plus some things that you really want to do for kids. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, second one this evening. Professional Development Plan. This is Hendrickson.
So our 25-26 Professional Development Plan is going to build upon our plan this year. We're gonna continue to focus on building a professional learning community that fosters continuous growth to support our diverse learners and that is aligned with our Strategic Coherence Plan. We're gonna continue to offer coherent, comprehensive, differentiated PD that is collaborative, collaborative and reflective and is based on data-driven. So again, surveying our staff, seeing what's working, looking at our student data and aligning with our Strategic Coherence Plan. Our plan is still gonna focus on those five phases of PD. Building our knowledge base, practicing, reflecting on our practice, making adjustments as needed, sharing our successes, sharing where we could improve and then where we can learn from there. We're gonna continue the mentoring program. Our new educator study group will offer a few select study groups next year again that are aligned with our Strategic Coherence Plan. We're gonna continue using Frontline as our platform to document and track our PD that we offer and continue to offer surveys to get feedback after each session. The focus area, again, is aligned with our Strategic Coherence Plan. We're gonna literacy, CSS, SEO, technology integration, PLCs, family engagement and looking towards the portrait of a graduate.
There's a lot of acronyms. Anybody questions about any of the acronyms right there? Presented them before, but, okay.
Our evaluation methods, again, the surveys, student data, our Strategic Coherence Plan, survey data that we send out three times a year, staff, students and families, with the outcome that this is supporting our student learning, foster net growth and driving a system-wide improvement plan that's consistent among all six buildings. So this summer, we're offering our Fourth Annual CSS Symposium with the theme "The Amazing Dragon Race." It's gonna be a multi-day learning event with breakout sessions and we've also embedded application time. So once we've learned about a new strategy, take that time right then and there to blend it in our planning. So we're offering that July 16th and 17th and also August 5th and 6th. If those dates don't work out for our staff, we have also approved CED offerings that again align with our Strategic Coherence Plan. We have those listed and have sent those out to staff. They may choose for time any two days. The topics are at one of each five. Literacy, STEM, again, social-emotional learning, mental health, instructional best practices and technology innovation. And then our CED, BOCES approved. These are the approved topics, again, near those same five topics. Literacy, STEM, SEO, structural best practices and technology. So whether or not they can attend our in-house CSS Symposium or the BOCES one, we know that our future folks will receive the same message.
As board members, you're always welcome to come and visit those things when they're going on in the building, sit in the session, just take it in, see what our teachers are doing. We always have encouraged that, so please do that.
Let us know. I heard you're pretty good.
But you've been part of the Amazing Dragon Race team.
Ah, there you go.
One of the challenges.
Quick question now.
Yeah.
When it comes to, I'm just thinking, I know that summer PD versus the year-long, like some of the things we do on CED, different things throughout the year. Sometimes it's, you know, new teacher orientation, but sometimes it's PD throughout the year addressing certain topics. Is that a separate category in the summer?
We try not to do any of one and done. We build upon what we've already started. So last summer, we started like Princess, Seven Mighty Moves for Literacy. We're continuing that. We started the writing revolutions, we're building upon that. Total participation techniques, so we differentiate that based on if you're new to the district or are looking to... So we continue to offer those throughout.
I guess I was thinking the breakout sessions, like, you know, there's so many different areas and topics that we can work on. Are there like certain things that are like everybody, you know, that, you know, these are the ones we have to all have in the breakout? Or is it more picking the areas that you think you need growth or wanna see?
There are picking the areas that you want to attend. There are some like AI is important, so we offered more of those sessions. We do check in Frontline who's attended AI or not, so we'll pick up on in September, making sure that everyone has the understanding of AI, for example.
Yeah, that was kind of what I was going to, like if some weekends in the summer, they'll get that, but I want to make sure that, you know. I don't understand the system enough to make sure everyone's getting that too, because I know we talked about that, some of the policies and stuff. That we have to make sure everybody's getting that opportunity to learn those things that we're gonna be interacting with.
We've done really work trying to make sure that intentional, that everything is aligned about the ingredients of all of our teaching staff. I just had a few people today reach out and like, "I really wanted to explore this a little bit more." I'm like, "Send me a proposal, we'll see where it fits in and if it aligns with the goals that we've identified already that we're focusing on." And we're willing to approve those.
All right, thank you.
The next one, Title 1?
Yeah, no, I was looking at the screen, it caught me by, I was looking at the screen.
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't think there's a presentation for the next one.
Yeah, it's a presentation, yeah. Thank you, Renee. If there's any questions, as I said, please participate. Comment, check out our PD in the summer, the feedback we get in the... I believe we've got quite a few people already signed up is what I've heard as well, right?
Oh, yeah. We just ran the numbers now for the behavior solutions. I think we're at, we have 43 staff signed up for that. There's Rika squared and this morning or yesterday, we released the SCAD, which is the sign up for the breakout sessions. And I've already got, we're good. Some are full and want us to offer different sessions again. So that's the responsiveness. We're trying to really assume to what people want to attend.
In our, we've generally been around 90%, right, in the summers generally?
Yeah.
Of participants?
We have 103 signed up for the July dates and 73 in the office ones.
It's coming along. So fantastic. Thank you. Uh, next item this evening is our 202526 Title I parent involvement, family engagement.
So this policy that we have attached is out along with its outline of comments is required by the federal government for all schools receiving Title I family. The goal for this is really to engage families. And knowing that engage families leads to higher student achievement. So throughout the school year, we had Title I engagement advisor meetings, district co-parents, committee, site base, family engagement, surveys, with then collecting feedback. We had two recess family meetings. One of the meetings they suggested wanted to offer an 11pm that families might, right at nine o'clock, were available to attend a meeting after they dropped their students off at 8:30. And we had three, four parents show up. So I thought that was great feedback and they gave us some more ideas of how we can communicate. They talked about having us go to where our parents are. So going to the practices during the summer where some parents have to stay there for three hours that might have a captive audience. So we're taking that out and utilizing the TV screens at the auditorium at high school to run information, sessions about pathways, opportunities that we have in the district. So we had a lot of great ideas somewhere. So the final version will be presented for your approval at the Oregon Education Annual Organization Meeting. Once that's approved, we'll post it on our website. We'll share it out by September 1st to all families and have our first advisory meeting in September.
Any questions? Thank you. And our fourth one this evening, school comprehensive ed plan and our strategic coherence plan 2429.
So this really is a quick review of where we are with our plans. Because we're part of the school improvement, New York State identifies schools that need targeted schools. We have a district comprehensive plan and then a school comprehensive plan for two of our schools. So really this kind of talks about how we will line those up and make sure that our one-year plan is aligned with our five-year plan and where we are currently with that. That idea of those three circles, the culture, system, structures surrounding learning and wellness and life pathways for our kids. Learning being the center of this is the function. Those tenets around the outside are part of that New York State structure with systems and organization and leadership being part of systems, curriculum and instruction being part of learning, and then social emotional learning and family engagement being part of the culture piece that kind of tie together and surround what we're going to do for our kids. So last year was year one of our strategic coherence plan and we had four outcomes. It didn't really line up with the three circles having four outcomes. So we tried to kind of merge them a little bit more this year. And look at those primary indicators for each of the circles. As you know, our part of the five-year plan is looking specifically at building a culture of goal setting and having our kids become more active in their part of the learning through their goal setting. So each of those areas has primary indicators and additional indicators. If you look at those sheets, which we're going to have Alex kind of refine, this was our rough draft, as you can see up there. On the backside, on the flip side of that, and you have a copy, the hard copy of that, you also have primary supporting action steps that go along with those indicators. So this, it's kind of the, the what we're going to do and then the how we're going to do it on each of these sheets. So we're hopeful that this makes it a little easier to digest and you can kind of see all of our families, our staff can understand this is, this is the direction we're going to go and how we're going to get there.
And this was reviewed at the meeting last week with the DCE, with the district coherence council?
Correct.
We've been trying to this whole year to see a lot of input, you know, what is going to be actionable? What can we actually accomplish and get feedback and make those adjustments?
Quick question. So I imagine that the action steps are based off the kind of quantitative data we received, how it progressed over the last year with it. So still in line to hit our goals in the end, but looking at the best ways based off of the, you know, with the idealism is the realism. What's actually going to be effective, what's going to work? And then these are kind of the updated kind of decisions to move forward, I'm assuming?
You got it. And a big part of that was with the input, looking at the specific indicators and saying like, this isn't, this isn't realistic. Having 100% graduation is great behind the sky, but as part of a five-year plan, we want to, we tried to adjust those to be realistic so that people felt like we could take the steps to move toward them. And as part of our goal setting, that includes staff and teams as well. They're going to set goals, they're going to work for that and kind of build the ladder, so to speak, to achieve these. So yes, some of them have changed, some of them have stayed the same, some of that, you know. With the input, with the, the information that we've gotten from the surveys, when we have DCC, when we have our curriculum cabinet meetings and leadership meetings, that's all time when we spend talking about what works here, what doesn't work, what's realistic, what's kind of fallen away. And looking at differentiating it for different groups. Like one of the things we learned this year is we try to do attendance K-12 and it worked for some of our folks, but it didn't work for others. So looking at what we can do to have this work at the high school, the junior high, and the elementary schools, even like primary and middle part of the elementary school to specifically dig into the goal setting and what developmentally works best for those kids.
But putting in collaboration, having reflection. We found that in the junior high and high school, we're talking about goal setting. They're like, oh, that was a good idea. We can leverage that at the high school. We didn't think to present it this way, so I think we need to provide more opportunities for that. And collaboration time between the two to see what works.
So as a result, we did our fall survey and then our spring survey. These are kind of the summary of the, of the survey results. So students basically, and you're going to find kind of a theme here, that the students, the staff and the families all felt like relationships were, were important and our relationships, relationships are pretty strong for us. That idea of instructional support and the purpose of school being learning and instruction and academic achievement is important. See that across. And then the culture of how we feel welcome, how we are able to access learning. And then that idea of what we're going to do to continue to move our strategic plan forward through the goal setting. So you can see that with those, those areas for strengths for our kids where in most cases, 90, 90% or more of the kids felt like these, these were strengths for us. And then for the students, areas that we looked and found areas for improvement, even though we felt like, the kids felt like there was a high level of respect, there are some areas where we need to target some, some specific groups and make sure that they have that connection and feel included with what's going on. The idea of goal setting, about two-thirds said, yep, we're doing this. And where another third said, ah, we might have touched on it, but we didn't do a lot of it. So that's part of this year's plan is making that more part of our culture and what we're going to do. Getting more kids to participate in extracurriculars because we know whether it is, it's band music in our schools or it's athletics or it's, I know we're going to talk about the iRacing here pretty soon too. That's, that's kind of a plan to get kids more involved because we know kids that are involved with those things and are doing well with those are more likely to jump in and do, do extras in school too. And then something that we see again with the families, with staff and with kids is they want to make sure they're getting feedback on how they're doing and they have some choices in what they're going to do and how they're going to do it. For staff, again, you can see that idea of relationships and collegial support. Strength, it's the people part of the job. Instruction, 96% felt confident that they're ready to make the, meet the kids where they, where they were. The work was important for them. You've heard, I know, probably heard the term collective efficacy, but that idea that what I do matters at work. And for our kids, for, for our people who are working here, for our staff as well, their jobs are important. They matter. And then understanding what we have to do and again, keeping that focus on learning first, that school, its primary job is to make sure that our kids are achieving and learning. Staff said they would like some more, well, always better communication, more access to things. Being aware of the strategic plan and again, hopefully coming up with three, the three sheets in a simpler form so that they can access that and better understand what we're doing and how we're going to do it. And then making sure that we're, our focus is, is always on learning and what we're going to do. We won't get lost in the weeds sometimes. Which brings us to the, the third leg of that, which is the family. Again, respectful staff culture and encouraged engagement with, with families was high scoring. Communication, most families felt was pretty good. And again, academic expectations, they feel like the rigor of school is there. We have a lot of programs to meet their kids. And of course, things that we can work on, making sure that kids have that same efficacy and feel good about what they do and that school matters to them. Where a lot of our kids said, most of the time, only 20% said always feel good about going to school. So about a quarter of that, that's one we want to dig into. Looking at feedback, which we know feedback promotes growth. So making sure we have better opportunities for more feedback, that SEO piece. And then of course, consistency on when we can be involved as families, what we can do. And we're starting to build that network. Every time we have a family engagement kind of opportunity, there's a couple more people who want to come and share their voice and be heard. So it's slowly starting to build. So our focus going forward, again, that idea of five-year plan to build that culture. We know it takes three to five years to change a culture around something. So we're going into year two and last year it was, you're going to hear about goal setting. We're going to dig into goal setting every once in a while. We're going to spend some time. This year it's not just goal setting, it's planning, it's building that ladder to reach our goals and looking at all the steps, mapping our goals out, being able to monitor our progress. And, and I keep saying are because it's going to be administrators, teachers, staff, teams, grade levels. We're going to work on goal setting and monitoring that progress so that our kids are seeing that, we're celebrating that both as teams and individually. And then of course, just like the plan, being able to adjust on the fly if something is working or not working, being able to set it aside or amp it up. And then of course, celebrating and sharing our accomplishments in a meaningful way so that our kids are celebrated, our schools are celebrated, our teams are celebrated and in a real way. So that achievement is, is the key there.
We've been at the ratio of one, the SE, our next school with our two targeted schools falling in the third grade identified that also which is a district that we have to write plans for. So on the right-hand side of the timeline, write that step forward, developing those plans and writing them. So we go to the next piece. What's key is taking those surveys that we just, that Jeff just shared and really digging in to identify what is it that we need more information on. So part of the review process and analyzing the data is doing student interviews. And we have to do between five to 10 student interviews from each of the identified schools. We chose to do that across the whole district and specifically in the subgroups that were identified. So randomly chose students to interview and dig in. So the next slide are the questions that we came up with. After looking at the data that Jeff just shared with the strategic coherence plan, what do we want to know more about more specifically? So we developed two sets of questions for students in grades three through six and then the high school and junior high. Really trying to filter through what makes them proud to come to school. You know, what's important for them, what was, what are engaging lessons that lasted with, with them that really resonated? How can we help you, how can we support you? So based on those interviews, we, these are the themes that came out. Relationships matter. Students said, you know, they're willing to take risks with people that they trust. So how do we build that? Hands-on and creative learning, they said the lessons that mattered to them are ones that are involved movement, games, embedded, those emotional supports in the lessons. Again, recess and movement were just key. That was a trend from the elementary to the high school. Providing opportunities for them to have voice and choice and opportunities for growth. So based on those themes and that specific feedback from our students, our next step is really drilling down, starting to write our plans for kindergarten and volunteering. And then the district will support those systems. What was important for all of us was really to still stay aligned with our strategic coherence plan. So we're not forgetting that five-year plan and not letting goals drop. We're going to continue that, but how can we really identify where are the barriers to the subjects that aren't being successful? And why we're being identified on the state test? So the two key strategies that we've come to consensus with is really expanding our MTSS. So there's the I there that we've integrated. So we're really looking at the holistic opportunities for our students. Attendance, behavior, MAP, ELA, just the well-rounded piece of that. So where is it breaking down in our current system? So there's a rubric that we're going to, the fidelity rubric that we're going to really dive into and find out where it's breaking down for us and focus on that as a key strategy. Really seeing where we can be timely and targeted with our supports. And if students aren't receiving consistent interventions, what, again, what are the barriers? Is it attendance of students? Is it lack of having substitute teachers available? Is, so we're going to be really drilling in those pieces. And then the second identified strategy is PLCs. So we've had those for a while now, but we had a lot of new staff. So we can't assume that they have the same skills that they attended the same trainings. So going back to modeling, I do, we do, you do, really breaking down and sharing expectations of what a PLC looks like. Having that data there to analyze student work together and how can we then bring in engagement strategies for our students? So planning together, again, the backwards planning in there.
So in both of these cases, you think about those three circles, culture, surrounding system, surrounding learning. These two professional learning communities and a multi-tiered system of support really are the system spaces. They're those middle circle. That's where we can focus on what staff behaviors, what we do as, as folks to support the kids' learning. That's not to say it's separate from learning, but it's the idea of really refining those systems that support learning and building the culture that allows us to take risks, support each other and learn from, from what we do.
Does the staff fairly have enough time to do the PLCs together and what are making a difference in what's happening with the students?
That is, that is what is going to be one of our action steps to identify.
We're still working on.
So creating a schedule of dates and times, really making sure that we have coverage and then identifying backup coverage. That was something that we talked about just yesterday, like this is important. We know our teachers need their time for this and uninterrupted and making sure that they can get there on time. We talked about having facilitators, you know, ready to go so that since our teachers come in, you know, real things are set for them to really dive in. So that's definitely a key step to the mission.
So part of it is, is finding more time if we can, but also being more efficient with the time we have and figuring out better practices within that time to say like, this, this works better for our team, for our kids, and not just trying to necessarily add extra time. If we need it, we're going to look for it, but we also want to look at those systems and say like, okay, we can definitely clean this up.
And making sure all groups of teachers have PLC time. Especially our special class teachers, special area teachers. And making sure that those are built in for them. So this, this part really aligns with the students, what they said, you know, relationships matter. How are the two key strategies that we identified, the MTSSI and PLC support those? So when you hear students saying, we, we learn best when it's hands-on, that is engaging, those two structures will help us really get those. So our next steps, we look forward to the finalized review hopefully by next week. We're looking forward to those to be approved. We're looking forward to those to be approved by the 24th, we have to submit it to the state by July 1st, and it has to be implemented no later than the first day of school. We already have set dates to start those action steps before school starts.
So, what Renee didn't say was, the state, the state deadline there of July 1st was originally August 1st, which would've given us some time to dig in in the summer. July 1st makes it awfully ambitious, and we've been working through the month of June, and having folks come in after school or during school to try and dig into this, because we have to have this ready by the end of school. Our, our last day is the 27th, and then, it's due the following, you know, which is Friday, and then the following Tuesday, it has to be submitted by that time. So, we really have had a push to, to make sure that we've got this part as thoroughly done as possible, and she spent a lot of time digging in to making sure, because it's, it's a confusing process, to make sure, and then, more importantly, to make sure that what we end up doing for our building plans and our district plan lines up with our long-term plan, like, that's, that's the key part, we don't wanna have three separate pieces, we wanna have one thing that points us in the right direction all the way through this. So, that's been something that's been kind of a driver for this as well.
I guess, quick question with the implementation plan? I'm trying to think the best way to word of using all the context and words we've been using in this, but I'm thinking kind of a cultural aspect, some of the things require some shifting, you know, necessarily how the delivery, not necessarily what we're teaching, but sometimes the delivery, how can we, we're trying to achieve those things that the kids are more into, when interested in. How do we find that at the, I guess, leadership level of, you know, I've, I've always done it this way, and the kids in my class get it this way, but now, okay, we're trying it this way, because there are still students that are saying they're not getting it that way. Where, where do you find, I guess, the barriers and different things that you, we have like a step to kind of deal with that, I guess?
I think the key there is building trusting relationships, a high-functioning PLC, set norms and rules, and can have tough conversations. You can't get those tough conversations unless you build those relationships first. I think that's where we're gonna really start, is really, well, what an effective PLC looks like, identifying everyone's strengths and tapping into those as a team, and, and using data, taking a look at where students are successful, where they need to grow, and what works and doesn't work, and getting feedback from our students, to use those as leverage points, leverage points.
And, again, continuing to survey our students, looking at the goal setting, if, if our plan is working, our kids will feel more invested in what they're learning and how they're learning it, so they're gonna get this impact, that they're more engaged. We're trying to look at those areas that, that are more high-functioning and replicate some of those pieces that work there, because there isn't a, a set way of everyone must do it this way in order for it to work. A lot of that comes back to the relationships that they had, the feedback that they're giving, and having someone coach and build, build along the way. But, the thing that you initially started with was instructional practice, right? So, how do we make sure that what we're doing is the best way to reach our learners and get them engaged with what they're doing? Not just get grades, but learn. Anyone? Tim? Any other question? Bob?
Okay. So, I just wanna thank my team and all of the educators and the parents and everybody who's contributed in the process for each of the documents that you just, we're giving a brief overview to. We had a lot of teachers involved, I went down the room 100, and we had teams from all six, you know, schools represented, and we had a lot of input from the parents coming in the other morning, and, and had a list of things, student surveys, the breakdown of all the surveys, and all the kids that participated, the staff and the parents, there's a lot of components that'll create these plans, and the goal is to have a real thread through everything. If there's anything we've tried to do, is you don't want, historically, across the state, you come up with a plan and you respond because of scores. We've tried to keep things synthesized together, so we have the strong foundation, always coming back to our Strategic Coherence Plan, and you can see how it all fits together, and I think that will lend itself to helping people understand how it fits. And so, when all of these celebrations happen, and they will, you're gonna, I think eventually this is all gonna come together, and you're gonna see some really, things are really gonna take off in a number of different areas. Thank you to everybody who participated in this process, and thank you to, to Jeff and Renee for leading that process, it's a lot of people and a lot of time, so thank you so much. And with that, that's conclusion of the superintendent's report.
All right. Action 4.01, accept financials, somebody move it?
Move it.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Action 4.02, approve the disposal of the surplus, surplus property?
Move it.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Staining? Passes 6-0-0. I just wanted to say, uh, thank you to your librarian over at Fairgrave, that's a very extensive list, and probably took some time to put together.
I walked in there a few times and saw piles every which way, so I will make a note.
Action 5.01, approve committee on special education?
Move it.
Lori, Tim?
Yeah.
Okay.
Whichever.
Be, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Staining? Passes 6-0-0. Action 5.02, to appoint the impartial hearing officer?
Move it.
So, Tim, Nick? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Action 6.01 is just the first read of the policies, so make sure you look those over, and we will be voting on those at the next meeting. I did have a quick question, and maybe I just didn't see it, but I feel like there was only 10 policies. Did anybody else see that? I feel like I did not see policy, the, the sixth one, which was 92-80, the non-instructional stuff, was that on, Ella?
Yeah.
I think it was on there.
It was on there. Okay, one of them was, I, I did not see one of them, so I will go back and re-look.
We'll check as well, just.
Yeah, 'cause I'm like, I didn't see that one, and I was like, um, so, is there any discussion on any of the policies that are being put forth in front of us at this point? Or any input from anyone on the policy committee?
I'll just throw in that these ones that are showing up now, some of the other ones we looked at, we had to go in and look at, you know, talk with some lawyers, just making sure we're, you know, following everything to a T before we implement the policy, but I believe one of these we're getting rid of because it was either redundant, or it didn't make sense for us to have it anymore. And then, other than that, I think we had one or two where we maybe changed the language, but other than that, they're pretty much consistent of what they were.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to our personnel, would somebody like to batch 7.01 to 7.28?
Move it.
Can we with a tenure?
Can we do what?
We can't with the, can we do that with a tenure?
I believe the tenure ones, I, I believe, I think you're right, I think each one has to be.
Individual.
You know, educational law, I don't know. I can't remember.
We did do, I, we, because we have batched them, yeah.
I believe we can batch, unless there's any questions about any of them.
Do you wanna batch all the tenure?
I can check the.
Like, do you want to batch, then the tenure?
I don't remember.
I don't, I just didn't know.
I think we can batch, because they're all, they're all in one catchment, and they're separate resolutions, so I think we're fine.
I know we've done it in the past, but.
Yeah, we will verify just to make sure, but let's do, you can batch this evening, and then I'll check if we had to, we can always.
Okay.
All right?
All right. So, can I have somebody move that?
Move it.
And, second? What's that?
Tim Connors.
Tim Connors, Tim and Tim. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Passes 6-0-0. Congratulations to all of our tenure employees now, we had quite a few, and that's really good to see, so, great.
Google says that we kept it. I know, looking up too.
Board votes to batch them and then pass them, it's.
That's, that's why I wanted to double check.
Just wanna make sure what's in the roll call, thank you. It was a good question.
Yes. Because if, if we weren't allowed to, we've been doing it this way for a while, so I'm glad that you touched on that, so thank you. All right. Get to the end of my page here. Board forum, we'll move into. Mrs. Hutchinson, would you like to start us off tonight?
I will. I'm going to be a little bit like Thorn in the district side for a second. Yes, me, only because I remembered, it's you guys' fault, by the way, when we're talking about the, all the graduation ceremonies, and these, and everything that we've got going on this week, and then we're talking about family engagement as well. I just wanted to bring out my point of view, so, working mom, like many of our community members, taking lots of days off this month, lots of things going on in the district, award ceremonies, moving ceremonies, graduations, things like that, and then I'd gotten, and I'm not gonna call the school out by any means, but I had gotten a, you know, parent square thing saying, hey, fourth grade, or fourth quarter, award ceremonies on this day, parents, you know, come at this time, and, and things like that, and I'm thinking, I'm like, is this my kid getting an award? Like, I don't, I can't remember being notified that he's getting an award, is this something I have to attend, 'cause I've already taken four days off, I'm like, probably not going, 'cause I don't, I haven't gotten notified my kiddo's getting an award. Then I come to find out, it's actually a moving up ceremony, so I was going to skip it completely. So, things like this, things like Parent University that we renamed, like Family Fun Day, if there's a way to communicate, like formerly known as X, Y, and Z, because this is a thing that we definitely want family engagement in, we want parents to come and support their kiddos, and just the fact that I'm halfway educated with what's going on in the district, and I didn't recognize that this was not just an awards ceremony, it was, you know, a moving up ceremony, gives great opportunities for other community members to miss that opportunity as well. So, I just wanted to say, you know, I know, as, as we rename things or move things into different directions, if we can also, you know, discuss what they are formerly known as, if parents are aware, until we're fully comfortable with that verbiage. And then, the second thing I wanted to throw out is, this Friday, our eighth graders are gonna be working very hard at Kneel Landing, doing our, with our synergy project and our capstone project, if our community members want to come out maybe this weekend and look at all their hard work that they're gonna be doing, it will be absolutely phenomenal, and so, they've got some really great things planned for our community, so I just wanted to shout out them as well, and that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Crandall?
Well, I wanna thank everyone for the presentations, it'll be nice, hopefully, to get all these phases done next year and move on to something different, that'll be nice. Some of these things we've talked about for years, and finally, some of it's getting done, and I'm glad of that, and, that's it.
All right, Ms. Paul?
I wanna say a special shout-out to Mr. and Mrs. Henderson, because you guys work so hard, I can't even imagine the time you guys put into this, and I wanna say thank you, and I hope everyone appreciates how much time and how much effort you put into all that you do. Thank you to Mr. James and Mr. Herbert for the update on the capital project, and congratulations to all the tenured, the staff, teachers, and teaching assistants and stuff, I saw some great names on there.
That's great. Mr. Connors?
Dino, on the presentations tonight, they were very, very succinct, you know, sometimes it's just the data being given, but I really appreciate everyone giving the why, answering the questions, really understanding what they're talking about, and it really shows when you give the presentation, so kudos to everybody who presented tonight. I wanna give a shout-out to all the kids, 'cause I don't think we're going to see, we're not here till after graduation, so I guess, you know, good luck with testing, congratulations for everybody, look forward to seeing you on the 20th, and I guess, there were just so many amazing things, like you listed in the beginning, all the music stuff, I enjoy when I get on Facebook, and I, you know, every like fourth thing that comes up for me is what we're doing in the district, or I'll see Mrs. Henderson share, this is what we're doing in the district, I mean, so, I'm always getting it some way or some different form, that just, you know, really shows that, you know, no matter what area it is, our, our kids are really excelling, but also pushing to go out and do things, and all those extracurriculars like you mentioned, Mr. Henderson, not just coming to school, but being a part of the community. And so, I, you know, kudos to kids out there, and I think congratulations on just finishing up the year, and I think let's finish strong, let's do well, and I like that we're moving forward and starting on a positive note this summer with PG, and then moving forward into September.
Thank you. Mr. Dejorn?
Let's left the safe.
I know, right?
Congratulations to all the graduates, thank you to King and Pam Chase for the updates, very informative. When that floor starts, I'd like to watch that process, is that possible? Yeah, I'm not gonna be there every day, but.
Bring your dustpits.
Thank you to the Hendersons for, again, all their hard work and making it so that we can understand it, and thank you to Mrs. Elmore for the concise list of upcoming events, that's what I count on, check my calendar and make sure I've got it on my phone. Thank you.
You're welcome. I wanted to say, last Friday, Mr. Cahill had his students over at the War Memorial, and I was not able to make it back in town to hear our students, which I know that they came and read to us at the board, but I had heard from some community members that it was a wonderful event, and I also heard that Mr. Pallino was given a Founder's Award from Mr. Cahill for helping get this started, and giving his support to Mr. Parr.
Unexpected.
Yes, so, yeah, Little Birdie told me that one. And, so it was really nice for that, for that event, and I, I am thankful that Mr. Cahill has put so much time into this event and bringing this to his students, as well as all the students in our district, so I continue to support him in future endeavors around this, this time of year. This past weekend, my husband and I were able to join the Fourth Annual Booster Burn, it was nice to see some of our staff there, some of our principals, a few of our administrators. It was a really great day to get out and walk or run, the weather was beautiful, lots of our kids were there. We missed a few, I, we were the day after the senior dinner dance, so some of the seniors, I was hoping to try to outrun this year, were probably sleeping in, so, but it was really nice to be there, I, I thank Beth Nicholson and all of the support she gets from her booster's athletic club to put on this event, the nice 5K through, over by Patrick Circle and back, it was just nice to see lots of littles out there running, I'm gonna tell you, we have some really fast littles in our district, that, yes, they run faster than the grownups, it's wonderful to see them out there. The money is raised to help our students, and I am just very thankful to all of the, that the booster, um, club does for our kiddos. Our dragons, we say that were driven, that were wise and were resilient, I don't know how resilient we were on, on Sunday, but there were a lot of driven and resilient runners and walkers out there, so that was a great event. Also, I had a couple students tell me that there was recognition for graduation with their summa cum laude and magna cum ludes, I know that there will, by the numbers that Mr. Pallino had put in our update, that it looks like we're gonna be seeing a lot of our senior class standing in observation on graduation day. I just, I, I just love to see that part of graduation, and the fact that so many of these kids, I know we kind of talked about this a little bit at that meeting I popped in with you guys last week, you know, this is one of those things that our kids are driven for and work hard to make the mark, I mean, they're not just given these awards, or this, this is something they've worked hard for many years, so I think it's something that great that we do in our district, and I'm just really proud of all of the students, and I know the students that talked to me about it, they were, they were happy with their, you know, success, so. Saw the first School Champions video, our beautiful landscaping, Cindy, she's very well-deserving, we walk around our district to see all of the great things that she does.
I'd call it, Desiree put all of the banners up for the champions for the 24-25 squares, so we have two years to challenge them.
Wow, that is fantastic, great for our district and all of our champions. We have great people in our district, and.
Thank you, Desiree.
Thank you. So, that is what I have for this evening. Um, so that is what I have for this evening. Um, with that said, I, everybody else, can't say anything else, you guys have already touched base on that, so. Um, board forum, or public forum, is anybody interested in, uh, approaching, talking to us? Okay, uh, we will then be moving into executive session. So for everybody who joined us this evening, thank you very much, have a wonderful evening. Uh, we probably need to move executive session, so who would like to move that?
I'll move it.
Okay, second. It's just an assumption we're moving in there, and I just forget to move it. Um, all those in favor? I, opposed, abstaining, passes seven zero zero. All right, let's take a break.
Can I have somebody move action nine point zero one adjournments?
Move it.
So Nick and Lori, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining passes five zero zero. All right, thank you for joining us this evening. Have a great night.